Welcome back, Paul.
Well, Paul, we voted to open the meeting. I'm just gonna ask David to read the agenda, please. David.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, the element approved the agenda and then a period of public comment. The first item is a consent agenda with a payroll warrant and select board next meeting date of April 29. And then the third item under the consent agendas, police chief search committee meeting for April 22, 2021. The second item on the agenda is COVID-19 team update. Item three, acceptance of various grant awards as Chief Zach Ward. Item four, consideration of appointment Personnel Board, McMillian Kleisner for a term to expire June 15, 2024, and consideration of appointment to the Sherburne Arts Council, Jeannie Anderson for a term to expire June 15, 2024. Agenda five, award of library borrowing anticipation note, Heidi Doyle Treasurer. Item six, Memorial Day, a request from Jeff Waldron. Item seven, consideration of routine business with select board reports. Do you want me to read the executive session?
We did exactly. We'll make a decision when it comes up to it. Really? Please.
Okay. Executive session is set. One item to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board, and the chair does so declare to discuss the town library pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Sections 21A, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus DKM 449 Mass. 444, 2007. And that is it.
Very good. Thank you very much. Can I motion relative to the agenda, please?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as overall, I move that we accept the agenda as read by the town administrator.
All right. All right. All in favor, George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well. Okay, very good. Next one, COVID-19 team update.
I started off wrong.
He threw me off because I
I screwed you up. I moved that we approved the consent agenda as identified the payroll warrant for next meeting dates.
Second.
All in favor, George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And Paul?
Hi.
And I am I. Now, it's a COVID-19 team update. Thank you very much. I see we have Daryl and Zach on the call. I don't know if either one of you have an update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll start with just a small, short, public service announcement. And this is based on just some trends that we've been seeing in town. And basically, what this is in regards to is when either the fire department or the police department responds to your home. Just a couple of sort of disappointing trends we've been seeing. We've been going to homes and for whatever call, fire alarm, carbon dioxide. And in some cases, the occupants of the home are ill with COVID symptoms, or they're quarantined because of a contact with COVID, or potentially, they think they have COVID. And we just want to just remind people, when you call 911 or you call the police department, you call the fire department, just please let whoever you're talking to on the phone know ahead of time. If that's the case, and again, we've seen that several times. And if we do come to your home, just in respect to safety for everyone involved, we just ask that you wear a mask, particularly in your home, if we're checking the smoke detectors or attending to a family member who's suffering from a medical emergency. Again, just to keep everybody safe and and hopefully, we can get through this a little quicker. But yeah, again, just a very basic, brief announcement there.
Very good. Thank you, Zach. Are there any other updates?
Yes, I have one, and I'm going to share my screen.
All right.
Okay, bringing this up just because there has been more discussion about people's concerns for their children and what's happened to the last year, and should they have their child redo a school year or a variety of concerns? So I wanted to mention a few things. At the mass.gov website, if you go to the COVID-19 banner and select there, you will find something that talks about getting help. And then from there, you can select this mental health resources for children. And that will take you to a special website, and there you will see more options. And that's all I'm going to show you in terms of the thread, but there are resources there also on the on the Sherborne webpage also for COVID-19. Under COVID, you know, basic COVID-19 information, we have a link to Boston Children's Hospital, which also has a wide variety of information to help people get through the, hopefully, the last bits of this pandemic. I will note that it used to be the prominent thing on their page. Now, the lead-in is mostly getting children vaccinated, when and how, and what it will mean for them. Some other safety precaution issues, and then farther down, they have information also about how to talk to your kids about the things that we're encountering during this time. And then this was also in the New York Times recently. And I just pulled out an excerpt. This is based on a study being done at Columbia University, I believe connected with their medical arm, and also with input from others. So I'll just let people read this on their own. So I think basically what it's saying is maybe there, and maybe people want to seek help as well to help set an example for their children on how to get through this. Continue getting through it. Gotten through this far, continue. So that's it.
That's good information. Thank you, Daryl.
For sharing that, Daryl, that's actually very relevant. It's one of my biggest concerns with, you know, teenage daughters. It's thank you for sharing this a lot. That means
Yes, I mean, it has been our concern all along, and why, and I commend everybody in Sherborne for supporting us from Farm Pond Committee, the Sherborne Yacht Club, Recreation Committee, Fire Department, Police Department, everybody. DPW has all been supporting the efforts to keep access to our open spaces available to people. So there's an outlet and things to do that we're in a safe setting. And the schools too, everybody's been really great in trying to do the best we can under the circumstances.
Absolutely. They, it is, it is great. You can tell the difference in the kids' moods when they can get out. And like now that lacrosse season has started, they're so active. It's great to have them out there playing on the fields.
Right. Their blessing is we've just got a lot of beautiful open space for hiking and
Exactly.
and everything else. We're really quite fortunate.
Daryl, I have a question for you. Pfizer asked the FDA about vaccinations for 12 to 15-year-olds. How quickly does the FDA usually respond on that?
Oh, gee.
I don't know. I mean, with COVID, I know it's maybe accelerated. So I'm just curious.
It is accelerated, but even, you know, compared to something that used to take years, I would say we're really accelerated now. But to know specifically what their timeline is, I have not heard anything about that. White House briefings or other
They've started clinical trials with children, I think, eight and eight through 16.
Well, 12, they did a clinical trial, the phase three with Pfizer, and it was 100% effective for 12 to 15-year-olds.
I know, yeah.
Asked the FDA to have an emergent, they put in the request last week, but
The U.A.
Have that approved, which would be great to be vaccinated before school starts again, yeah.
Yeah, at this stage, it's usually not about effectiveness. It's about the dosing, how, what the dosage is, right? So it's more about safety. So dosing is, you know, critical for kids, you know, based on their weight. They may have criteria based on their weight and their age.
That's crazy, because 12 to 15-year-olds can vary much differently.
Hugely, I know.
And some are not.
And as you can imagine, the the ordinary sample size is probably not the net either. So that complicates it.
Yeah.
In terms of evaluating.
Yeah, like I said, I think it would be great if they could have vaccinations open over the summer before school starts again.
I think that's highly likely.
That'd be great.
I do.
I also think that's high on their minds. So whatever they can.
Confront, though, is, you know, if people are gonna, you know, the political ramification, if people are gonna be upset if we require vaccination to return to school in the fall. That's gonna be a big political hot football, too. I mean, you're required, you can't go to kindergarten without measles, MMR, measles, Mumps, and Rubeala, you know, so.
Right. Well, and that's a controversy right now with a lot of universities requiring it, and some are not, so.
The requirements will be, though, there'll be an exception for, you know, people that have sort of either an autoimmune disease or some condition that makes them not a good candidate for the vaccine. So there will be a medical exception, but it's sort of, you have to document that, so. Anyway.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you.
I was gonna bring up a couple of other COVID things.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. I automatically go to the two, so I apologize. Please.
Do you have anything else, Daryl?
Oh, there's always lots of things, but
I was gonna mention the high school prom. They are, they have a sort of a socially-distanced high school prom plan. They're gonna go to Granite Links and have an outdoor separate, separated, physically separated pseudo-prom, I guess you call it.
And it's gonna be limited only to the senior classes.
Yeah. We're gonna talk about Memorial Day later, which is really a COVID discussion also, so I'll wait to that item. They're also figuring out high school graduations still, so they're working on how they're gonna handle that a little bit. We did vaccinate, I don't know if you talked about there, we vaccinated the homebound seniors in town. Visiting Nurse Association is now helping people that had a hard time getting to the doctors. And I know, Paul, you were concerned about that, I think, earlier on, so.
We think that was done last Thursday.
Through the CNA and the Board of Health identified, I think, around 10 seniors in town who were homebound, and we've had them vaccinated by our Visiting Nurse Association. So that was a good thing. What else? I don't know. They're still getting pretty, not really high participation in the pool testing at the high school. Wasn't it around 30%, Daryl, I think?
Well, that's up from 20. So that was an improvement. Some of that is a result of sports.
Requiring athletes, I don't know if you've experienced this, George, they're requiring people on the high school sports teams to participate in the pool testing in order to be, you know, be able to be on the team.
No, the youth sports are not requiring that, but kids are pool tested anyway. I turned them up because I thought it was a good idea, so.
Yeah, so anyway, so I think that other than Memorial Day, which we're talking about in a bit, that's, that's all I can think of. In sports, putting porta-potties, I believe, out on the fields shortly.
And there, and I apologize, I assumed you were done before. Do you have more to add?
Um, there's always more to add, but I'm not sure how much you want to know about what goes on. I would like to thank our visiting nurses for it was not a simple process to get the homebound vaccinated, but, and also the DPH, though, helped us out too, so that we could do that in Sherborne for our folks.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. Okay, without anything else, I'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Acceptance of Various Grant Awards, Chief Zach Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before you tonight, our four grants for the fire department, I'll just briefly go through them all. The first is an Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program COVID Supplemental in the amount of $5,746.19. That's for PPE, COVID-related PPE for our firefighters and EMTs. The next one is our Safe Grant, and then the one after that is our Senior Safe. Those are for our fire prevention programs for both the kids and the senior population. The Safe Grants in the amount of $3,794. The Senior Safe is $2,188. And then the last one is a Department of Fire Services Equipment Grant with a total of $9,797. That's to purchase four sets of fire gear. When I say four sets, that's only the coat and the pants for four firefighters. Doesn't include the helmet, gloves, boots, and other things. So the total with those four comes out to $21,250.19. So we're just looking for a motion and a vote to accept these grants for the fire department.
And it could be one for all four? One motion accepting for all four? Okay.
I believe, I believe that'd be sufficient, yes.
Yeah, Paul.
I had a question. I understand that these coats and pants have PFAS in them, but you can get some that don't have PFAS in them. So based on an article I read, I guess I would encourage you to spend the money on outfits that do not have PFAS chemicals in them.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great point, Mr. Dorentz. So we actually have a Health and Safety Committee that we formed here in the, in the fire department. That's one of the first things they're gonna be looking at. They're kind of getting started up next week. I did just see that Niantucket got some fire gear that's PFAS-free. They're the, one of the first in the country, and they just got it a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, it's very new to the fire service, but it's absolutely something we're gonna be looking very strongly at. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
I probably want to get, Daryl does, she's still on, she does this for her day job. So it turns out there's like 170 different kinds of PFAS. So when they say it's, they usually only test for six or eight, which are the common ones. So some of the things that say they're PFAS-free are only free of the six or eight that they currently test for.
Exactly.
So it's not, it's not exactly as simple as it sounds, I think, but I'm not, Daryl has done a lot of this research for her clients, so she can talk about. She's not on the call anymore, but some of these people claiming that their PFAS-free materials are only testing for about 5% of the known types of PFAS, mainly because they're more common. But what happens is they often, if they have one that's rejected, then they, the PFAS is in the material for a reason, you know, it makes it either more protective or more flexible. So they usually substitute another PFAS that's not tested for currently, rather than making it PFAS-free. So it's a little bit complicated, but anyway.
Certainly is.
And I'm sure Zach could touch base with Daryl, like when it comes time to actually order this PP as well.
Right.
All right, is there, I guess, a motion relative to these grants?
So move that we accept the grants and authorize their use consistent with the terms of the grant.
In a second. Okay, all in favor, George?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I might as well. Okay, good job.
Good work, Zach, getting these grants. That's great. And just last but not least, I just want to thank Lieutenant Kristen Butler for securing the the equipment grant from DFS. So thank you.
Very good. Okay.
As long as we're thanking her, Zach, she also did a special event for the Cub Scouts this week at the fire station to obtain certain advancements, so they can join Boy Scouts now. So thank her for doing that.
I absolutely will. Thank you for bringing that up.
Tuesday night, she did that.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Four, Consideration Appointment to Personnel Board, Maxime and Kleiser for a term to expire June 15, 2024, and consideration appointments for the Sherburne Arts Council, Jeannie Anderson for a term to expire also June 15, 2024. I see Jeff as his, if you want to be recognized.
Yeah, yes, please. Thanks, Eric. What I'd like to do, I've felt this way for a long time, and we can see how other people feel, but I feel that we need to very strongly encourage all of the boards to recommend two or three candidates for us to consider for an open position. And I know that these, both of these positions were advertised, but I think we need to start encouraging boards and committees to actively recruit multiple candidates, so we can get some diversity on our committees. And so I don't feel comfortable appointing a single person to either of these positions. They may be well-qualified, but what I would recommend is we take no action on these two appointments and defer action and ask both committees and all future committees to come back with a few candidates that we can look at and review their backgrounds and pick the ones that we feel are most appropriate. So I would move that we defer on these two appointments for now, and they can come back when they have a few more candidates to present to us, so we can have some options to look at. And I think it's important to also gain more diversity on some of these boards, is we get a lot of the same people on different boards in towns, but I'd like to get some new residents and more involvement. So that's my motion to defer on the two appointments.
Of course, I'd like to thank everyone for using the virtual hand thing. You know, I'm a fan of that. I'll recognize George next. I see, Vicky, that's Yes, George.
Thanks, Eric. I talked about this last year, and I agree with Jeff that we need to change the process. And it's not so much the boards presenting multiple people. I think we need to advertise this to the select board, and we need to review the candidates before the boards do. It's our job to appoint these people to all these committees. Diane sent around a list of all the committee vacancies today, and I think we should advertise more widely. Go to Nextdoor, let's see how we can get more community involvement. Then we review the candidates and then before the board, I don't want boards self-appointed. That's been a trend in our town. We've seen it for years. And I think that's wrong. I think our job is to appoint the best person for the position, and so many times, we have one candidate, nothing against the candidates tonight. I do have to say, I think, I just, I think we need to fix our process of advertising widely, trying to get multiple people. I know it's hard in this town. We don't have a lot of residents, and the same people are the same volunteers, but I think we should be reviewing, and we shouldn't have self-appointed boards.
All right, thank you. Vicky, please.
Thank you. I just have a strong feeling that I agree with everything you're saying, both of you. I think that this is a process that needs to be looked at probably in a little more detail in terms of process and how things are done going forward. I think that you're absolutely correct, both of you, that it needs to be a systemized approach, so we can gather more people. However, I feel that should be going forward at this point, to put it into place when somebody's being brought up to be put on a position now, without knowing this prior, I think is a little prejudicial. And I also think that there's been quite a long time I've known about this position. I've asked around many, many people. I've gone around my whole neighborhood. I'm on the board personnel. I've gone all around my whole neighborhood of Farm Road, Great Rock, Peckham Hill. We have our own little neighborhood thing on Nextdoor. I asked everybody on that. I've put the word out, and I've had no takers. When I asked a few other people, they were thinking about it. I discussed it with Max, and he felt that it would be, he would be a good fit for it because he's dealt with budgets over $70 million. He's dealt with teams over, you know, 10, 15, 20 people. He's managed people, multiple different scenarios. So, you know, I feel because of the people that are on the board now between myself and Nick and Nancy, it's a good place for somebody new like Max to come into, to learn the ropes. Nick is especially talented because he's an employment lawyer, so I'd like to take advantage of his knowledge base now for myself as well, but I think he will help new people coming on to learn about things that we do. So from my perspective, I totally agree with the process going forward should be evaluated, but I think it's a bigger issue than to just say want tonight, you know, we're gonna dismiss everybody from this point forward. I think if that was the case, you should have brought this up before these people came up to be presented. So I have no problem doing this, you know, going forward. And as a Personnel Board, I really advocate for it, and I think we should get involved as well. But at this point, you know, I think it would be very prejudicial to do this right now. And I feel very strongly about that. So that's just my two cents. Max is a great candidate. I don't have any reason why he shouldn't be accepted at this point, especially when I've spent hours trying to find other people. And how long, Diane, has this been up?
Diane?
Months.
Sorry, yeah, we've been trying to find the fifth candidate for the personal that for a very long time.
So, you know, I think
A very long time.
Yeah. And I, but I agree. I think we need to push social media. We need to advertise more. We need to talk it up more, but I did my part. I did it for a couple of months because I knew after, you know, we had that opening, that we were gonna have a tough time. So we have a candidate here that's well-qualified and who's already involved in another town board, so I don't see why this should be an issue.
I'd like to recognize Sue Tyler, under her code name, next, please.
Hi, Susan Tyler, 26 Weston Avenue. I have, they haven't been on many, many committees in town. I've seen the process from both sides. And I agree with what has been said regarding that you are the appointed, you, the board of selectmen, are the appointing authority. And what seems to be the history, and I'm not talking about the, 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 the appointments that are before you tonight, but the process needs to be fixed because it's the, the committee members on a committee find somebody of their own liking, their own choosing, and present it to you and say, okay, this is the one. Now, unfortunately, what happens is most of the other committees in town are not televised. They're not publicized, so you don't know what it is that you're getting into. So I make the suggestion that should you have an opening, that that board come to you beforehand, and, and somebody can explain in a televised meeting what exactly it is that they do. You know, I mean, I can think of some committees that start off at 7 o'clock and end at midnight. Well, it would be worthwhile for that person to know that we meet twice a month, and we go from 7 to 12. So the committees need to come to you before it's advertised or in conjunction with it being advertised, so that maybe because you are televised. There are lots of committees in this town where nobody knows what goes on. So I would suggest that. And yes, everybody likes to pick like-minded people, but there needs to be some diversity in this town. It's sorely lacking on so many committees, and I won't go into which ones. It doesn't matter. You all know which ones they are. But whether you, the selectman, you're the appointing authority, whether you need to go and start this ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
Leanne, if you could just state your name for the record, please, complete name.
Hi, Leanne Nguyen. I'm the Chair of the Arts Council. I just wanted to second what was said before. And also, I too searched high and low for arts committee members for a very long time, both in my neighborhood and on Nextdoor and through other channels, and wasn't able to find many members. And it wasn't until just the other day that Jill Anderson came up on Diane Moore's radar and wanted to be on the arts committee again, and I happily accept her being on the committee. I just think with a small town, you know, and I've been to see many of the people get elected and running unopposed and get appointed. And so I'm not sure now is the right time to not put people on committees, but I do think that there now is the time to start talking about how to better outreach, so we get, you know, more diversified people going forward. So that's my, that's my say.
Okay, very good. Now, if you don't mind, if Vicky and Leanne could lower your hands, just so I can keep track of them. Who has them up? And I believe Jackie Morris is next. Jackie, there you are. You have your mute on, by the way.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, sorry about that. And of course, forgive me if I don't remember, but I believe Max is an elected for a member of the library trustees. Can he be on the personnel board? I've been trying to search Miss General Locks. I'm not sure.
Vicky is, Vicky is on both right now, too.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know if, if she's supposed to be, but, but she is, she is both trustee.
You are correct about that. Okay. There has been so many changes to all of the boards lately with a lot of resignations. I can't remember who's appointed and who's coming up for election. So I
Jackie, that would be, that would be good for you to review that for us though, so we know. Because I know like advisory committee members cannot serve on anything else.
Right.
And so I don't know what the rules are for each of the committees. So that would be good to know.
Okay.
As we look at, because like I said, I think at our next meeting, we're going to have an agenda item to discuss this process because Diane sent around the list of openings that are coming up this spring. And I think to, to have that information of, I think we need to know if there's certain people that are ineligible, like if they're elected to something, are they ineligible for something else? Or if they're appointed to one committee, are they ineligible for other committees? Because I know there's multiple people in town that sit on multiple boards or committees. So
Right. Okay.
I, I agree with George completely and that reinforces what Sue said, that we all try to get some more diversity too. So that would eliminate the conflict in another way by bringing varied opinions. And I appreciate Leanne and Vicky's input that it's, I know that it's very hard to find people for committees. But I feel like if we don't start now, then when are we going to start? So, so I've made a motion that we defer on these two appointments and ask them to come back with several candidates. And I just wanted to see if anyone would be willing to second that emotion.
I'll take a second if there's a second, but I'm going to recognize more dialogue out I see out in the audience as well.
Paul's got a second.
Okay, I recognize Paul and then I go to the virtual hands after that. But I say, I'm gonna, well, actually, I'll let Paul speak. So I was almost going to make a legal opinion about something. So why would I do that when Paul has his hand raised?
No, no, I was just going to second the motion by Jeff so we can have the debate. But that was, that was all I was trying to do.
I was also going to speak out of ignorance because I, I looked into it a little bit and I know Paul knows better. Maybe I'll wait until we get a real opinion, but there are some things that can't overlap and under state law, from my understanding. But I thought there are a lot of exemptions for towns under five thousand people. And I think that might be this interesting look into and Sherburne does fit those exemptions for the under five thousand people or because they're, they know there is a limited popular that actually volunteers and does things. Not to waste the time in this meeting, but I did a job once out in Washington, Mass. And I kept dealing with the same guy with everything out there. Town of like eight hundred. Okay, Vicky, Vicky again, please. Vicky, roll us again.
Sorry about that. I really have a serious problem with what Jeff is proposing. I think there's a prejudice here and I really have a problem with it. So I agree with the process needs to be changed, but to bring this up now because certain people are being presented, I have a problem with this. It's extremely prejudicial and I have a problem with it. So I just let the board know that this is going to be a problem.
All right, Leanne, please again.
Yep, I, I thank you. I, I just think it's, I think it's great to have a plan in place before you change things. So I'm not sure we've come to the table with anything, but someone just not wanting to go forward with it without a plan in place, like how, when's the next time that we can bring people up? When, what is the plan? Is it four weeks? Is it six weeks? Is it a month? Because we have no plan in place, we should be following the rules as we have been. That's my opinion.
All right, I'm going to bring the dialogue back onto the board here. The one statement I'll make is that it's not a new concept. George has talked about self appointing boards numerous times. And it's been discussion about, you know, keeping advertisements open until a number of candidates here. In this case, you know, it is, it wasn't brought up during this advertisement, you know, it stuck to the thirty days. Would there be consideration amongst the board to maybe have a time limit? Like, okay, say, okay, we think that it's, we'd like to see more candidates, but at a certain time, time's up and whoever applies is applied and we, and we make a vote at a certain, at a certain date held fast. I'd like to open that discussion amongst the board.
Right. I have to say, I'm like torn on this because I know we need to change this process, but I also understand where Vicky and Leanne are coming from, that it's kind of last minute for these two appointments. So I, I'm kind of, I'm torn because, you know, we really need to change it. And, and may, maybe it is that we have to change it after making these. I just, I hate the fact, I've been, I've been on the board for three or four years now and I feel like we've rubber stamped every appointment that's ever come through here. And I don't like that. I don't feel like that's our, I think we're not doing our duty. But at the same time, is it fair to bring this up on a night? Like how long, I mean Diane, both of these positions, I assume were advertised for over thirty days, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Personnel has been on the various notices that I send out for maybe a few years trying to get somebody.
Yeah.
I, I think we need, I think we need to define the process a little bit better. I, I don't, I'm not opposed to having, you know, a time limit if they can't find another candidate. But we just heard from Jackie that we need to look at an issue of conflicts and see if people are even allowed this, certain people that are elected are allowed to serve on different boards. I think we need to sit down and, and look at the process. And I know David Williams is actually our HR director for town. So it seems, I don't know if he has insights on this in terms of how other towns do it. But I feel that we're not in a position to make a decision tonight. And I strongly feel that we can create a policy that we can move going forward and now is the time.
I think the board should come up with a, a policy. There's, there's in their manual, their operating manual, there's a, a process and it's, we've kind of been following that old process as far as advertising. And George has it right. It seems to be putting the cart before the horse. But the selectmen should be interviewing the candidates first and making a recommendation to the boards to accept them as a candidate. I'd also like to see people actually go into meetings. Now, the personnel board hasn't met in quite a while, so they haven't had the luxury of having people go to the meetings to express interest or not. But I think, I mean, I think you definitely have to schedule an agenda item for that some night. But I have to say, for some reason, Susan Tyler is on my screen looking at me like, but
No, no, I know, I know. I see it, but I'm still keeping that dialogue amongst the board and then I recognize you, Sue.
I'd like to hear how Paul and us have kind of spoken a little bit about it. Do you have a thought on this? Like what, you've been doing this for a long time. So
Yeah, I, I always hesitate about putting an operating department on a personnel board. We got a library, for example, the libraries under the general laws operate fairly independently of other town departments, but they, and they have employees. So if there's an employee of the library and there's an issue with that employee, having the same person on the personnel board who's also dealing with the employee issue from the point of view of the library is something I want to think of before I pass my vote. So I like the idea of putting this off for tonight. But maybe talk to some of my library clients and think, see what they think about it.
Okay, I think I got most of that and broke up a little bit, but I think, I think we all got that. So I guess here's what I was alluding to. I was trying to get to before. Is there a modification of the motion to extend it to either one or two select board meetings? See who's at that point there. At some point it has become, I guess, what I was alluding to before, that the town of five thousand, the rule of necessity, where basically you only have so many people that'll do it. So maybe something's not ideal, but you simply, you know, need to follow through with the process or what have you. Is there any thought on extending up, having a, a pretty strict time limit, call it like two, two select board meetings from now?
I think, I think, yeah, I think that makes sense to either do one or two. I don't think we should defer it too long. Because, but I think Jackie made a good point. I like, I would like to see some feedback from Jackie as to what the eligibility is. I mean, I know Vicky already does this, but that doesn't mean it's necessarily supposed to be done. So that's, I think, I think I'd really like to hear from Jackie before making any more appointments.
So before I go back out to audience, does someone want to make a modification or a, a motion relative to?
Can, can I ask that Jeff modifies his motion to defer for two weeks to that, to our next meeting?
Well, I don't, I, I don't mind modifying it, but I don't think two weeks is enough. I think it's on us to, to document the process a little bit too, so that we're not just, you know, I don't think that we'll have, two weeks from now have enough information to do that. So I wouldn't, I would maybe modify it to a month from now or, or two meetings from now. But I think it's not just the deferral. I think it's also us maybe coming up with a little bit better document, documentation of what our process is.
That, that's a good point because at our next meeting, we can real, let's plan on having an agenda item at our next meeting.
Right.
Talk about our process and exactly how appointments are made.
Yep.
And then a following meeting, we can take up those appointments.
Yep. So just to clarify, so Jeff, you've modified yours to make it basically two, call it thirty days or two select board meetings from now.
Two select board meetings out.
And I guess Paul had the second. Do you second?
Yes.
Okay, so now I'm going to go back to the audience before the vote because I did promise Sue and I don't want to be on her bad side.
Did you put the number up on your house?
I'm going to say yes, because I don't need no fine.
He closed the blinds though.
My earlier comment where I said that you, the board of selectmen, maybe you need to bring the committees in so they can explain their process and their meetings and what their functions and what they do. That ties into right in with, I believe it was Leanne from the Art Council. I've lived in this town. I won't say how long. Now, unless I want to open up paperwork and find out exactly what it is they do, I don't know. And so maybe you've got somebody that's in the audience that may watch these meetings or may know of somebody that would say, oh, I've got the perfect fit for that. But unless you know what they do and how they function. So again, I think the comment regarding the Art Council, and I'm not just picking on that one, but it was presented tonight, is a perfect example. There's a committee. I have no idea what it is they do in town. And so I might have put my name out for it, but I don't know what they do. So I think you, the selectmen, need to have the committees that have openings come before you, present the fact, what it is they do, and they have an opening, and then you go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Vicky, do you have something to add as your hand?
No, I do have something to add. So two things. I asked before I took the position on the library trustees and I was told that there's no conflict. So that's why I accepted the position. Also, section twenty-three of the state ethics law says about appearances that before taking any type of action which could appear to be biased, there's something that needs to be disclosed that's relevant to the facts that are going on. I'm really hesitant to bring something up, but Jeff, I think that you need to disclose your bias against Max and why you've brought this up now. I really, really have a problem with this. Max is, there's no reason why somebody like Max, he's been, I put this out there two months ago. This is only put on the board, the agenda, because Diane said, let's put it on for the fiftieth. I brought this up two months ago and I put his name in. So it's been sitting there for a while. Somebody had a problem with it, they should have brought it up way before tonight, way before tonight. Qualifications of this person are fine. There's no problem with it. And so I really have a problem with bringing a process in now for the wrong reason. I like the process. I think what, what you're proposing is absolutely correct. But what we're doing right now is for the wrong reason. So that's all I have to say, but this is going to open up a huge can of worms because of what's happened tonight. This is, I'm very disappointed, very disappointed in the way that this is being handled, very disappointed. I just, I just had more, I had more faith in the integrity of the people that I should have. And I, I'm really disappointed and that I'm just, this is not good. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, is there any more comment amongst the board? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, just to, to continue this for two select board meetings and, and aggressive advertisement, just to assure that we have a diversity of applicants. All in favor, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
You're muted, Jeff.
You're muted.
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay, and I am I. Okay, I think it's a, a good discussion tonight. And we'll have some good follow-up both the next meeting and the meeting after that. Next meeting about the big picture and the meeting after about the specific item. Okay, agenda item number five, award of library borrowing anticipation note. Heidi Doyle, our town treasurer.
Thank you. Two hopefully very quick things to solve. One is to have a vote to award the, to Norwood Bank the library borrowing amount of one point six million dollars. It's for a six-month borrowing anticipation note. The rate is zero point three eight percent. And then also to work out the logistics of signing it. If I could get a motion to award Norwood Bank Library borrowing anticipation note.
So moved.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all in favor?
What is the rate that we're getting, Heidi?
Zero point three eight percent.
Oh my god.
I think we should go something better. You sure you couldn't get three, seven, point three seven?
I think because we went six months, they were actually willing to go lower than what I've seen some of the rates versus a year, gambling a year when you hear the interest rates are going up. But I, I, I thought it was a typo at first.
They're paying us.
We're almost at the point, yeah, where they're going to pay us. Give us the money.
My money market's making more money than this right now, so I have to watch that.
Okay, all in favor, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Paul?
Aye.
And I am I.
And, and then if we could just work out the signing, because this one requires the town clerk to witness the signing of this document.
Okay.
I don't know if we can FaceTime or if I could bring it around, or is it possible to ask David Williams to sign on your behalf? Any suggestions?
I mean, the David Williams option seems the easiest if, if that's something we can do, if we can delegate to him.
So moved.
Okay.
Is, is David around tomorrow at all? I know he's going on vacation.
I don't know. He's muted right now.
David?
If, if not, it probably, go ahead, David.
Or
David, you're muted.
I'm sorry. I said we'll, we will work it out. Yeah.
Diane signed and David's absence in our, on our behalf?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay, and, and we can just FaceTime Jackie tomorrow if it need be to have her witness it. Thank you.
Worst case, I could also, if you could vote for me to sign, if you can vote for one person or whatever. Which I'm fine with.
As an alternate, so move that the chair sign.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, George?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Heidi. Do better. Get a better write next time. Let's see, number six, Memorial Day, a request by Jeff Wald.
So this has come up in our COVID nineteen, both Dover and Sherburne, joint calls and Sherburne individual calls. We're trying to figure out, remember last year I helped create with Mike Kikkum the sort of virtual hybrid Memorial Day video that was really well received. Paul even had his daughter film him in the graveyard in a cemetery. And we had two Eagle Scouts do a flag ceremony. We had videotape of Zach and Lieutenant Bento and Daryl in front of a fire engine. But we mainly had clips from the prior year. But we mainly had um clips from the prior year, so now it it looks like um. We may be able to do, we we're trying to work it out with the the Board of Health who's coordinated with the state DPH. That we may be able to do an outdoor ceremony, um depending on the size of the um. Attendees, so what we're thinking is possibly being able to maybe go to Pine Hill Cemetery. It's possible, I think.
Yeah, Jeff, you can force them.
So um it's possible that we could maybe go to the Pine Hill Cemetery as one of ours would. We certainly can't have a parade. Parades are forbidden, but outdoor. Public gatherings have a certain maximum capacity, so we may be able to do a a physically distanced. Masked outdoor event such as a sort of speeches at the Pine Hill Cemetery. So we're. The DPH has not issued any specific guidelines for Memorial Day parades, but they're being asked. By a number of communities what they can do, so I just wanted to let you know that we're thinking about it, and if. Particularly Paul, if you talk to any of your other towns, or if anyone hears. Even in framing, Eric, of other communities, what they're doing, it would be interesting to know. Mike uh Kikum, did you want to add anything?
No, I I thought um I downloaded last year's. Just to go through it and I was still impressed with it. Uh there are a lot of comments from people who watched it. That thought it was very impressive. I like the fact that the band was shown. I like the fact um. Uh there were a lot of good speeches. The uh I have been, I I've gotten a call from the Dover Sherbon Band Girl. I got her name, I have it right here.
She was great, that group she led last year.
And she uh she is looking forward to doing something. And in fact, I got one today from her, uh but at any rate, I. I I think we ought to look into um what Dover may do, not that we're gonna do what they do. Uh cause I'm not sure what what they did last year.
They didn't do anything last year, and it won't do any good, because they want to know what we're doing so they can follow us.
Forget Dover for the time, okay? Uh I guess what I'm saying is. If we make, when we make a decision, we we have to sort of stay with it. Uh because of the amount of work involved in doing either one. So I'm I'm not sure with Board of Health what they're gonna say.
Well, it's really not the Board of Health. It ends up, what they'll do is they'll, we can come up with a proposal and they'll submit it to the DPH. Cause they get a lot of these things where we're considering something that's not clearly defined. They typically get a um. Sort of a uh individual judgment on our proposal by the DPH, mass DPH.
Well, we could do, but um we could do everything. At Pine Hill.
That's what I think would work the best.
In lieu of just passing on on sixteen and twenty-seven.
Yes. It's harder to physically distance there, because you're condensed by the road.
You could also, like, I know the bands have been playing at the schools outside. Practices. They've got, they've got their physical distancing thing figured out, so if you have. Designated space up at the cemetery, they can figure out where they can set up and.
Yep, we usually just have.
She sent me like two with three wires. She's a game for. But participating, not being on the video, although she was uh did a nice job on the video last year.
Sometimes also have the um the bag piper is a big popular one also.
Well, definitely, yeah, I made a note to give him a call again now. But I definitely think if we're gonna have it outside, we we should have the bag piper. He was, did an excellent job. On the video, right? Last year, he wasn't.
So so we'll be, we have a weekly call, so next Monday we'll have um Dover Sherbon or not Dover Sherbon, the Sherbon COVID calls at one P M. On Monday, this coming Monday. And every Monday.
If it's okay, just because Sue has had her hand up for a while, would like to recognize Sue in this discussion.
Hi there. Susan Tyler, I think um uh I'm now officially called the cemetery's agent. I'm more than welcome. The idea of having everybody up to Pine Hill Cemetery. Certainly, everybody's six-foot distancing is pretty easy up there. The flag pole, you need to let us know the flag pole, the actual rope is broken, so as far as we're in the process of trying to find.
I was gonna call uh. He has told me that he will replace that flag.
Well, we have all the materials. It's a matter of uh the the pole itself does not come down, so we need to address it. Anyway. But um as far as the social distancing a- and and that, there's plenty of room for everybody. Certainly, uh there's room for cars, and as far as the acoustics, there's certainly lovely areas up there. Historically, there's been consecration mound, which is up there, and the acoustics from there go wonderful. Um and I've discovered a few more veterans up there over the last two years. Uh that are interred there um that you, I couldn't give you the information last year, you didn't have anything COVID. But there's a few more veterans that are interred up there that um they need to be recognized.
Yeah, very good. Okay, any more discussion on Memorial Day parade, Memorial Day itself? Okay, I should say Memorial Day in general. Okay, very good.
That's all I have, but if people think of things, just let me know. Not, Zach's on, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Zach.
Not as of right now, you know, I I'm really hope, you know. I really hope that we can do something. I think it'd be good for the town and and like good for some of the youth and the different people, so. Hopefully, we can pull something up.
The views at the uh fire station were great.
Yeah, and we can get that cameraman back too for anything that we need and, you know, but it sounds like we want to do something in person.
Is that Klaus? Zach, is that his name?
No, this, that was another member, but Klaus has a good camera too.
He's a telecom guy too.
Well, Mike and Jeff, I'm happy to volunteer to do my usual.
Oh, you're definitely on. Yeah, I've already got it written down, Paul.
You've got season tickets, Paul.
I'm not very good at playing the bagpipes, though.
Oh, God, I guess what I had.
All right, that sounds like we're wrapping this one up, so I'll go on to um. Item number seven, uh consideration of uh routine business, uh select board reports. I think uh Jeff, you had a report made about the library construction.
Kind of Sean's on, he probably knows more about it. He had, you have a training exercise tonight, don't you, Zach, I believe?
Yeah, we have training going on downstairs.
I think that Sean was doing that, so I know that we've been working actively on the IT and telecom plan for the library, because we've got to. Order some of the PC equipment and um they're looking at communications uh with the phones. Our main phone switch for the town, as most people know, is in the police station, so. I believe they're planning to run a direct line to the police station to connect. Um to that for the phone system, and we'll need to order some IT equipment. So I know David's been involved in that. David, did you want to add anything else on the IT work and uh? They're working with the LBC, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I had mentioned to um Kevin to stay involved in it and that he's used to working with the library so he can um. Continue working with them and the LBC and uh you and and whoever else is involved. And then I listed out a couple of resources that he could call to come in. Um and I also have a meeting set up with um. Keith, uh I can't remember his last name, but.
The guy that used to be with Data Mart and switched, he's with another company now?
Yes. So um I have a meeting with him on the thirtieth, I think. He's already gone around to the departments and and uh seen what he could bring to the table. Um so I'm interested in talking to him and uh. It could be a good team with Kevin Whitman and Klaus and the others who are involved. And this company, because there are different layers of. Of items, you know, there's the the, like, there's the boots on the ground. Putting the wires together, but there's also layers of software and oversight. And then designing the whole network, so and I think that that's where um. Some of the expertise would be good coming in from Brandon.
Drafted a document and there's this, I guess, for the whole audience here, this is sort of bigger than the library too. This is really the. One of the problems is our telecom switch company was acquired and. Probably you're gonna, they're sort of retiring their older. Technology, probably gonna have to update in eighteen months for the town anyway, in some capacity, so this. Is timed because of the library opening and need to make some IT decisions for the library, but um. We we also have to plan ahead so that we're looking at the IT infrastructure for the town.
Right, so I think there's a a good, I think there's a good team that's come together. As long as we keep the communications going in the meetings um and uh. I believe it's uh April thirtieth, I set the meeting up for with.
Frank Orlando's been doing a little bit as one of the library trustees.
Right, 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 I forgot, sorry, but that.
He's been pretty active, it seems like. He worked for HP for thirty-five years, so he's got a little background.
Not his first rodeo.
So that's all I know on on that, but it's, we want to make sure that all the equipment's up and running and available. It includes things, not just. Phones and infrastructure, but there's a lot of things with kiosks with iPad type. You know, the digital card catalog system also is includes the community room is gonna have a large. Uh screen and there's a lot of audio visual equipment being installed there that will be connected via wifi, so. There are two, the new building, because of the length of the drops for the um. Drop points for all the wifi access points, there's actually two equipment rooms, one in the old basement and one in the new wing, because they had too long of a run to. Only have one equipment room, so anyway, that's being worked on.
Okay, very good. And I think people can see the progress is going um, is progressing nicely, certainly more than before. Okay, with all that being said, we have um executive session item before us. Um without giving any specifics, and I'll look kind of toward David and Jeff, and given the fact that we have a lot of our for our next meeting, a lot of the audience here, and I think it's the same Zoom. Um login, um do you think there's anything significant new that would be um worthwhile going into executive session for?
Not at this time, I don't think. I just, I have some firsts to show, that's.
Mary Mary Moore's on here. Mary, did you have anything that you thought needed to be in executive session?
Nope, nope, just free time tonight.
Don't get to.
A great way to spend your free time, Mary.
Yeah, don't get used to it. Okay, so without that, um I'll take a motion to um close this meeting. Okay, uh do I have a second? We like it that much, okay. Um all in favor, George? Jeff?
Just a question, uh if we close this meeting, did we notice? And post a separate agenda for the. Meeting we're having as the police search committee?
And to see Zoom, so it's almost equivalent having it in the same room. We essentially can just stop. I'm gonna go get a drink of water, and then we'll probably just reconvene and immediately then George takes over and calls up, you need to order.
Okay, I just want to be sure that by adjourning this that we didn't screw ourselves for the.
Diane posted everything for us correctly.
We'll just call that one to order, like George will call to order, what have you.
I vote I.
Okay, I vote I as well, very good. Like I said, I'm just gonna take a quick break, and I think George, it's your meeting.
Yeah, I'll open the meeting in just a few minutes.
Okay, very good.